Can you hear me?
Yeah, go right ahead, Mr. Chair. We're ready for you. We can hear you loud and clear.
Can anyone hear me?
Chair, we can hear you. How's your volume?
There you go. Sorry about that.
All right, go right ahead.
Morning, everybody, and thank you for today's meeting. We shall start. Call to order for the San Benito County. We have Ray and Joe with us.
Yes, we're all ready here. We have, in chambers, we have Supervisor Hernandez, Supervisor Medina, Supervisor Gilio, Cao Espinoza, Joel Ellingwood, and everybody's here, clerks here, ready to go.
Okay, then we're ready to start then. Call to order at nine oh one. Have a budgetary allegiance by Supervisor Patel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You're all right, and so is a bright face. Ready to move. I quite delegated. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Patel.
Thank you.
Do I have acknowledgement certificate of posting?
So move, Gilio.
Second, Medina.
All who are in favor, say aye.
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 Against? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Uh, Tucia, are you in the audience? Would you like to explain to the public what additional information the public needs to know about today's meeting?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Good morning. If you're participating via Zoom and would like to make a public comment, please raise the hand icon located in the middle of the screen. Also, if you're participating via phone, you can dial star nine when it's time for public comment, and a clerk of the board will address you in the order the hands are raised. Thank you.
Ms... Mr. Chair, if I may add one more comment to this. As you see in our posting of our posted and final agenda, it also, we also now are open to the public, but there are certain conditions that the public must follow. They must comply with the state of California's face covering requirements and making sure that they also follow social distancing of six feet requirement. So we have the chairs marked, we have the chairs marked in the audience. The ones that are blank are available to the public. The ones that are marked with an X, no one is allowed to sit at, and we have some reserve for staff for those that are going to be presenting today. So I wanted to make sure that the board and the public were aware of it. We do have available seats here in the audience. And one other thing I would like to add to this is we have a Plexiglas covering for the podium that we have, that we normally speak at, for our, for those that are staff members that will be presenting. That's all they'll be presenting from, and for them, for those that are from the public that want to speak, they'll be presenting from the center podium. And I just wanted to make sure that the board, as well as the public, was aware of those, of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any members of the public in the chambers that is not covered today?
No. No, sir.
Thank you. All right, so let's continue with... This actually, this actually is a call session, so we're gonna, I'm sorry, this is actually a special meeting, so we're gonna move directly to call session. Consent agenda?
Consent.
I apologize. Consent agenda? Is there a, is there a discussion on any of the items in consent?
Go ahead.
The public would like to pull item two.
Public would pull item two, Mr. Chair.
Got it. Any other, any other amendments?
See none in the chamber, Mr. Chair.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
I move to, Gilio moves to approve consent agenda minus number two, which we're gonna pull for discussion.
Medina, second.
Okay. Thank you. All who are in favor, say aye.
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 Against? Motion carries. Number two.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We are recommending deferral of this item into a future meeting in August because...
Is the mic working?
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
I can hear you. We can do this.
Okay. The operator wanted to have some time in order to come back with a proposal that meets some of the concerns that were raised, so we're recommending a deferral. At that time, there'll be an opportunity to speak, and prior to that, there'll be an opportunity to review any changes made. So we recommend the deferral.
Okay, so the rate stays the same, correct?
They are reviewing the rates. Now, at this point, the rate stays as what it is now, and if nothing will change until the board takes action.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
We have a public speaker, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, we'll go to public speaking after, after we hear thoughts from the board.
I have none. Mark Medina?
None, Gilio.
Thank you. Supervisor Patel?
No comments. I think it's a good idea.
Thank you, Supervisor Hernandez?
No comment, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Now we will go to public comment. Is there any speaker cards? Yes, madam?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Elias Salinas. First of all, I'd like to know who was speaking before. Was that Recology? I don't know who...
That was RMA Director Harry Mavergenes.
Okay. I couldn't, I couldn't see on the screen who was speaking. Thank you. Um, so I've asked to pull this because I wanted to get a little bit more information. First of all, I would like from the Cao, Mr. Espinoza, if he could give the public the information as to what exactly Integrated's position is within the county. I think there's a confusion of who Integrated works for, who they are, so I'd like to get some information on that. Also, not exactly sure what you mean by, it's coming back in August, and what, I don't think that there's any negotiating in price. It's negotiating on being able to defer, or what I call to stay the rate for a period of time. My concern is that we're in an economic crisis. We are at four, almost twenty percent unemployment in the San Benito County, and this affects a lot of people. So even if it's going to be, you know, whatever percentage that they're asking for at the moment, there's too many people that are unemployed. There's people that are on fixed incomes, and they just cannot afford to have this rate increase. I would prefer that Recology make a decision. I don't know what they mean by negotiating. There's no negotiating. You're either gonna do it, or you're not gonna do it, because apparently they're gonna stay at the same, the same rate increase, a percentage. I think it was almost at five percent. So what is being negotiated? It's either you're going to, Recology, you're gonna do the right thing for the citizens of San Benito County, San Juan Batista, and the city of Hollister, you're ratepayers, that you're not going to go through this rate increase for at least a period, I'm asking for a year. Maybe that's what you're negotiating on, is between what period of time. It's only gonna get worse. The economy's only gonna get worse. It's not getting any better. You stated, Recology stated that they gave the businesses an option that they didn't have to have service. Well, it's not that the business has an option, because the business has an option. They've always had it. So it's not like you were being kind to businesses to say you don't have to have the service during this period of time. So we want it extended to, extend it to the citizens to please don't rate, increase your pay rate for a period of time. And again, I'd like to ask Mr. Espinoza to please tell the public exactly what is Integrated's position where, with regards to what it is that they do for the county and how they represent the county with regards to, I suppose, all projects, because it cannot just be Recology that we're hiring these, and we have this department for just a one project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
If you wish to make a comment, press star nine or raise your hand. Valerie, please state your name for the record.
There you go. Did you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to, as the budget hearings are going to be in progress, and you're working on the next year's budget, I would like to remind the board of supervisors that the parks element is extremely important for equity.
Ms. Ingrid, could I please have a moment? This is in reference to the Recology presentation, not the budget yet. You may want to wait.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you, madam.
We have no more public comment.
No more? Okay, I'll move it back to the board. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr.?
I'll take a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Can you stand by one second, Supervisor Patel, if you don't mind? I just wanted to have the public comment addressed. We are negotiating with time to stay the increase. Is that correct? Just for Ms. Salinas's question?
Yes, that's, that is absolutely correct, and due to timing and holiday and that, the timing didn't work out. So that's why we're pushing it off to August. But we had to put this item on the agenda, because that's what, we continued it to a date specific, so that's the reason why. I did want to go ahead and just quickly brief, if that's all right with the board, what Integrated is. It's actually Integrated Waste. It's a division that falls under RMA. And what they do is, they do a tremendous amount of work. They actually oversee the Joint Powers Authority for the tri-agencies when it comes to negotiating and taking a lead with, with Recology for local waste. So that's one of the things that they do. They also handle bulky, bulky days items, so the public, part of the contract is that we have, like, if we have an old refrigerator, you have a bed mattress or something like that, you want to go ahead and take to the dump. There's bulky days.
Happens this weekend.
It's actually happening this weekend, absolutely. So there's, there's, that's what they manage. They also, which is really a big deal, is that the state is requiring that we have oversight over a reduction of different types of waste going into the landfill. So there's, they have to monitor that. They have to make sure that we're adhering to state law and putting in programs to address that. So there's quite a bit of work that this office does. I just wanted to relay that to the board and to the public. Yeah.
Mark Medina here.
Yes, sir?
We've tried on several occasions to bring this position in-house. We have had several interviews, and none of them panned out. So we are still actively looking for an individual to house this department, and then we would go away with Integrated Waste, or not Integrated Waste, but the actual company.
The contract that we're currently have, that's correct.
So that's, that's just, I wanted people to know that we are looking at an outside, or an internal position. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ray, before we ask for a motion, can you please contact the member of the audience and reach out to her and see if, see if there's any other information that she will need before the August meeting?
Will do. Sure do.
Thank you. Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Move to...
I'll take a motion to, to move the agenda item to August.
Thank you.
Second, Gilio. Second, Gilio.
Okay, motion by, thank you. Motion by Patel, second by Gilio. All who are in favor, say aye.
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 Against? Motion carries. Five zero. Now we will go to call session. Joe?
No, not yet.
Mr. Chair, we're gonna actually hear item number one. That's our COVID item, and then we will go into call session following.
Okay, we'll do that. Okay. Item number one, on the regular agenda, presentation from Tracy on the update COVID-19. Tracy?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Somebody could share my slideshow, please, and, Jolcy, if you could move Crystal into the speaking room, please. Crystal Lamontow. Can you start with the first slide? Show the first slide, the dashboard, please. Thank you. Okay, so this is our current data dashboard as of yesterday. We currently have twenty-two active cases, one new case as of yesterday, and so the county is continuing to monitor these cases on a regular basis. There should be a new update today coming out. Next slide, please. So this is some, some new data that I was going to share. The community has requested some more information on how the cases are being broken down. This was as of June twenty-third. Thirty-seven percent of our cases are from community transmission. Fifty-six percent of our cases are contacts from another positive case, and you can see the breakdown a little bit further. Fifty percent of the cases resided within the same household. Twenty, twenty-seven percent of the cases worked together, including two clusters of cases from a local business, and twenty percent of these cases were contacts to cases outside of the household. Hopefully, this helps people gain a better understanding of how the cases are being transmitted. We're not at liberty to share more information outside of this, but we just wanted to give you a little bit more information on how the cases are being transmitted. Next slide, please. So just some current data on our OptumServe testing site. Within the last week, there's been a large delay in the lab processing the cases. I'm not sure exactly why, but it was taking between five to six days for the results to come in. We just received Sunday, last Sunday's results yesterday, so it took a week. So our staff is working with the OptumServe staff to see what the, what the issues are. It looks like we are pending now from June twenty, our bulk is from June twenty-third. So we're trying to, you know, push out the data as quickly as possible. Again, our staff is working with the OptumServe site to see what's taking so long. It seems like it's the issue with the processing, but you can see we are testing daily a pretty high amount of tested, and that could be the, a pretty high amount of individuals, so that could be the reason why the labs are taking a little bit longer. Oh, just one more thing, sorry. We could add to this chart, other county of jurisdiction in the OJ column. So those are people who have tested that do not live in our counties, so their results post in the county in which they reside. They didn't, they are not reflected in our county, our county's testing. So we wanted to put that out there, because individuals were asking how many were out of county individuals, and so we added that to the chart. Next slide, please. So just wanted to provide a brief update on the county variance and the governor's update. So yesterday, CDPH, the California Department of Public Health, and Governor Newsom announced action on closure of bars for counties on the county monitoring list. So they ordered all bars closed in the following seven counties, which are listed here. They are also strongly recommending bar closures in other areas that are on the targeted list. The data that's being monitored for these things is elevated disease transmission, increasing hospitalizations, and limited hospital capacity. Just for everybody's clarity, our county is not currently on this monitoring list, but the state is monitoring all counties. So it's just a reminder that we are, you know, we do not want to have to scale back our county, but in the event that there's a surge in cases, the governor and/or health officer may have to scale us back as a county. So moving forward, our county continues to be able to open these facilities. The last bullet talks about, you know, just ensuring that they're continuing to follow the guidance that is listed on the governor's webpage at covid19.ca.gov. And this came out yesterday. Next slide. So we have a county in, we released county-specific guidance. We released some FAQs on the OptumServe site, because there's a lot of questions regarding how OptumServe's functioning, as well as how their data is being pushed out. So that's on our website. We issued some organized sports update guidance regarding the strength, strength training kind of social distancing exercises that are options for these types of sports. Expanded place of worship guidance, which offers some wedding guidance, fire stand guidance since the Fourth of July is coming up, and then some workplace FAQs. We've gotten recent questions pushed back to us on the workplace guidance, which we're following up on, so we should be clarifying some of that as well. If you have any questions or comments on anything that we've pushed out, or just general COVID-19, the email is publichealthreferral@cosb.us. That email is monitored, and we do our best to get back to people within twenty-four hours regarding questions. I wanted to provide just a brief update. I'm not sure if Crystal's on. I know there's been questions regarding school updates. We, our agency, as well as our public health officer, continues to meet with the county office of ed and the county superintendents to discuss the plan for reopening of schools. If Crystal is online, I'd like to give her an opportunity to chat briefly, just to give the board in the county an update.
She... Tracy, thank you for allowing me in. I couldn't get in at first. So, good morning, and a lot, of course, has been going on with education as we've navigated the COVID pandemic. Since March, the county office of ed has hosted weekly collaborations with all of our districts as we've had to navigate the closures of schools, which we worked with public health in the initial with the closing of schools. As I continue to remind our community, our parents, our educators, this truly is, you know, a health crisis that has caused a crisis for education. And so what we have been focusing on, obviously, is reopening the schools in the fall and what that would look like to ensure that we are following the appropriate guidance to keep both our students and our staff safe. I think what's been most difficult across the state of California, each county with their public health officers may have variances to the analysis of what the guidance looks like. And so I do want to compliment, Tracy has been on the call each week. Lynn Mello has joined us and provided updates on COVID itself in the community. And Dr. G has been on the last couple times and has committed to being on our calls weekly as we are working together to determine how do we best navigate the guidance and what that looks like to open schools. All of our districts are working with their own communities, and I won't speak on behalf of these districts. That's not my role, my role as school, registered to the city, and collaborate and provide support where needed. And so each district has been working on their own individual plans that meets the needs of their schools, and that has, and working with their school boards to determine how they can best navigate pulling students in. If you look at all the research right now, the best place for students to be is in schools. We know that. There's a lot of research on the mental health. We are in the position to figure out how do we best navigate that with the guidance of students six feet apart. I know that the state came out, excuse me, with the face covering, and initially, schools were exempt, and then, I apologize, excuse me, and then that has changed. And I know that Tracy said that they're going to come out with additional guidance. If you go to the California Department of Education, it's Stronger Together. It's a thirty-page document that provides guidance for education to open up safely, as well as the California Public Health has provided guidance aligned with CDC. And so we are using all of those documents with our public health to navigate how do we best open schools to keep students and staff safe. I'm gonna stop there, you know, with just a little bit of an overview of what we've been working on across the county. Obviously, our rural schools, because they are so small, it will be very easy for them to open fully, because they may only have six students in a huge classroom, and they can easily social distance, six feet apart, face covering, and engage. And so it's a little bit different for our rural schools versus our, our larger comprehensive districts that have, obviously, a lot more students. So I'm gonna stop there.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Crystal, for being available.
Sure.
Okay, next slide, please. So we have Dr. Gaviradichi available. He's going to give us a brief update. Gorgi?
Everyone, so Tracy provided the dashboard numbers, and I won't go over those again. I just wanted to give a kind of overview of where we are. So as far as our indicators, our case rate is considered by the state to be moderately concerning. We had a report of eighty-two point eight cases per hundred thousand. And although the numbers have dropped recently, some of that may be due to the delayed reporting that Tracy talked about from the OptumServe site. Our testing positivity rate still remains in a moderately concerning category at seven point seven percent. The state has told us that if we exceed eight percent, that that could be a cause for concern, and we're gonna, we're watching that closely. And then the average number of tests per day continues to be pretty good, but we're doing really well in terms of hospitalizations and healthcare capacity. So overall, I feel, I feel okay about where we are, and I think we're still on the right track. We've had, obviously, an advantage early on about keeping the spread down. We just have to maintain that vigilance as we go forward. We're still working with our vulnerable populations, including the skilled nursing facilities, and there's some increased surveillance testing happening there. So I think at this point, we're relatively stable, and we're obviously keeping a close eye on it. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes our presentation. We're open to any questions from the board at this time.
Mr. Chair, can you put me in line?
Supervisor Medina?
Yes, Tracy, one quick question. Hospitalizations. On that chart we have on the dashboard, does that include Hazel Hawkins and surrounding hospitals, just for clarification?
Thank you. That's a great question. So there's been a little confusion around the hospitalization tab. So the hospitalizations that are reported on the dashboard are any individuals who reside in San Benito County that are hospitalized at any hospital, whether it's Hazel Hawkins or outside the county. They report out on our hospital tab as being hospitalized as a resident of San Benito County.
And, you know, just for the record, I know there's been some confusion on that, but on my daily update, I receive the numbers straight from Hazel Hawkins Hospital, and what I'm reporting is Hazel Hawkins only, because what I want to look at is what we have locally. And when I say locally, what impact would it cause to the hospitals if someone or many people were to be hospitalized here at Hazel Hawkins? So just wanted to clarify that for everyone.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Tracy. Thank you for all your hard work.
Mr. Chair, Jim Gilio, if you could put me in line?
Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you Supervisor Medina, Supervisor Anthony Patel.
Hit my buttons. I gotta hit this button here. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So when the state analyzes some of these other counties that are on their watch list and in the case of Imperial County, they're, and I think Los Angeles, they're actually closing some businesses, bars and, and clubs and so forth. And from what I've been reading, their hospitalizations and their tax, their health services are being kind of taxed now because of the high rates. And our rate is, it's quite considerably higher than a month ago. It is concerning, but we're, but we still have a high level of capacity in our hospital. So should we be given a little bit better break than eight percent? I think Supervisor Medina was kind of hitting around that too, and I just wanted a little bit more clarification as well.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Giladucci here. Yeah, I agree. I, there are about six or seven indicators that the state will look at. One of them is test positivity and it's not the only indicator. So if, if we get into a point where we need to have conversations with them and we're not there at this point, the, the conversation's probably going to be about the composite picture, not just a single indicator. It's going to be kind of how you're doing overall. It'll really depend on what our plan is going forward and on mitigating that. So if, if, for example, we were in the situation like Imperial County and Imperial County, not that they're going to do this, but said, we're going to now allow public concerts or something like that, then the state would probably say, well, that doesn't seem wise given your current situation. So I think it's going to be a case by case. And I did mention that the eight percent rate of test positivity is a kind of reference of what, what we thought would be an item of concern or not, but it's not going to be the sole indicator determining what we do. So it'll be more a composite of all the other indicators, including hospitalization rates within the county healthcare capacity.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Jim Gilio.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah. Thank you for the hospital question and specifically, I, I don't want to be redundant, but I was asked this question a few times. Kaiser also would report out to our county health department, right? Not just all the other non-Kaiser hospitals? Is that correct, Tracy?
Sorry, I couldn't hear your question.
Kaiser specifically, sorry to be redundant, but I just wanted to ask because we have a lot of people that work in Santa Clara County and are Kaiser members. Have we been getting communications from Kaiser regarding any patients that they're receiving from San Benito County?
Lynn, are you on, can you answer that question specifically, Lynn?
Hi there, good morning. Yes, the answer is yes. We receive, so if a person resides in our community and seeks healthcare in another community and they are hospitalized in another community, Kaiser being, you know, a big provider to folks in this community, we would get the report and we would report that out on our dashboard, as well as Natimadad, Valley Medical, Stanford, any of the surrounding hospitals in the more metropolitan areas.
Thank you. I think that had a few questions specifically on Kaiser, so I think that'll clear that up. I appreciate that. Tracy and maybe Dr. Giladucci on this one. I had a couple of questions and this is not specifically COVID related, but I think it's, it's something that was an interesting question. Have you, with public health, I'm sure we monitor the, the general influenza. Have we seen a reduction in influenza activity because of some of the shelter in place and masks? And that's specifically a question from a few constituents that I wanted to pass on to you guys.
Yeah, Dr. Giladucci, I have to take that and Lynn you may want to add in too, but this is not traditionally the flu season. So at this point, we wouldn't really expect any impact on flu rates, but come this fall, of course, and then traditionally the flu season is usually right after Christmas break from January through March is where we see most of the peaks. And so it'll be interesting, but I think there will be, if we're continuing to do the social distancing and the masking and everything we're doing now, I think we'll see a positive effect on that influenza rates as well.
Yeah, logically you'd think so. Thank, thank you for that. And then the last question I have is probably for Tracy and the group and maybe Crystal Lamonto as well. I've had a few different school board members from different school districts actually reach out to me and wonder, asking me what the relationship between the school district and the county will be when school starts back up and guidance and that sort of thing. And I know we've talked about this a few times and my, my current understanding is that that relationship is very minimal and we're just there to answer questions and assist if we need to. When I say we, I mean the county H H S and that the school districts are working directly with the state. Is that accurate or could you provide any guidance for the community on that or updates?
Tracy, do you want me to start?
Yes, please. Go ahead, Crystal. Thank you.
I would say Supervisor Gilio, what we have just recently expressed as we continue to navigate COVID, and it was both Tracy Lynn and, and Dr. G really coming up with some protocols. So example, I think the biggest question we get, school returns and the students that being COVID positive in a classroom. Does the whole school have to close down? What happens in those regards? And so that is why we rely on public health to assist us with that. And we've talked about putting together kind of some protocol. What would it look like? Like we did, we engaged in March when we did close down the schools at that point. That was not the schools just solely engaging with that. That was in the collaboration with public health. Obviously, public health will have more of an internal view of what's happening with the COVID positivity in San Pao County. And a lot of that, of course, there, there's, you know, laws about, you know, individuals. And so we respect that, but working collaboratively to see what that looked like is essential. I was on, just quickly as a side note, working with the state superintendent, Tony Furman, about three weeks ago, there were select county offices that were allowed to be on a call with all public health officers across the city of California and navigating the school conversation. And so being able to listen to the conversations throughout the state, there's no perfect and easy answers to that. That is the unique thing to Supervisor Gilio. But we have agreed to continue to collaborate, come up with some scenarios before school engages so that we can be well prepared as we work through everything that will occur as schools in the fall. So I'll allow Dr. G or Tracy to add to that.
Thank, thank you. That's, I think that's sufficient and as, as time goes on, we can provide more, more data. The, the last thing I had would be for the doctor or perhaps H H S as well. As clearly we've, we've seen some more activity around COVID nineteen, is there any education or perhaps guidance or ability? Is it appropriate for H H S to do something like, like a campaign about the ability to maintain and boost one's immune system or different ideas or thoughts on, on how to do that so that we're, we're attacking this thing from all angles, so to speak? We have the social distancing, facial coverings, then also whatever we can do to encourage people to be as ready, their, their bodies to be as ready as possible. Is that something that makes sense to do or what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, Dr. Giladucci here. So yeah, I, I think there are clearly some things that can be done now to help minimize the risk of serious illness from COVID. And one of those clearly is diabetes. And we're seeing more and more evidence that shows that uncontrolled diabetes is a big risk factor for having a serious illness with related to COVID. So that's not something you can fix overnight, but obviously a lot of the lifestyle factors that we continue to speak about, healthy living, regular exercise, making changes in your diet and so forth to help control, especially type two diabetes is, it's super important. And it could reap benefits in three to four months, so of consistency there. So we do, and I'll ask Lynn or Tracy to add to this, but we do have public education campaigns related to that. I could see maybe some usefulness of intensifying that perhaps. But, and then also maybe interacting with our healthcare community to identify patients that are most at risk and finding ways to minimize their risk. This might be a motivation for people who have been meaning to try to get this under control but hasn't, haven't yet been able to do so.
Hi, this is Lynn. Just to add on to Dr. G's comments, we do have our health education team, although they are engaged in contact tracing, they continually are in the community, well, you know, virtually at this point, but they're continually working on the nutrition program, promoting healthy lifestyles, healthy diets, diabetes prevention, you know, fitness and general good health. And then we have our tobacco education team, which is, you know, smoking, we know, is, you know, those that smoke have a higher risk factor of complications from COVID nineteen. And so, you know, we work, you know, all ends of it, from policy down to individual, group and individual education to maintain, you know, healthy lungs and a healthy respiratory system as well.
Thank you for that. If you were to come up with some sort of public campaign, I'd be happy to share it on all my social media channels and I'm sure with the consent of the board, we could do that on our supervisor admin, county of San Benito channels as well. Just, you know, if there's certain vitamins, vitamin D, whatever it may be that happens to help with somebody's immune system, I think that'd be an important angle to look at. Thank you all for your time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Gilio. Supervisor Gilio.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, Dr. G, I'd like to ask a couple of different, well, actually Tracy, if you can, before I forget, I noticed the, the report wasn't on there and that was really good info, so I appreciate it. I want to see if you can forward me that or forward the board in general that, the info, your presentation. So I, I mean, I would imagine it would be based off of the input that you've been getting from, from the state, but I'm curious, I, I know what I'm reading in the, in the articles, but I'm confused because it wasn't very clear why the governor locked down besides he saw an increases in cases. So why did he lock down bars specifically?
I can share with you the, the details that came up that he released. I don't have them in front of me, but there was some specific rationale as to why he closed them. I would be happy to email it to you. I don't have it on my, right now, but I, from memory, it was close proximity in space, people's compromised judgment, being under the influence of alcohol. There were like five different indicators that he recorded, as well as the monitoring. So there, the county numbers in those specific counties were higher. Dr. G, do you remember any of the other details? I don't have them in front of me.
Yeah, Tracy, you, you got two of them, as I recall. The other one was, and this was something I, I recall when I used to go to bars, was they're very loud places and if you want to be heard, you really have to shout and sometimes even shout in somebody's ears. So they felt that all of those conditions, the, the drinking, the kind of social behavior, that's what bars are about, the, you know, sort of loud talking, kind of close contact, all of that were contributing factors to help cause bars to be in particular a risky kind of place to be. And as you know, I think the, the state of Florida has decided to close all bars and I think some other states are doing this as well. So this is kind of a targeted approach to counties that are having issues here in California.
So while along that, that note, is it, is it because we're seeing cases in bars increasing a lot? Because wouldn't that by default be the outcome of that situation because it would be high risk? It should be evident that there's a lot of people getting this COVID nineteen there?
That, thank you. That was another factor and part of the rationale for closing bars is that contact tracing is actually almost impossible in this setting because of the large mix of people. So that one probably falls on the community transmission, meaning we can't identify a particular source. But because of the nature of, of bars, it's almost impossible for the tracers to determine who came in contact with that person and be able to trace back all the potential exposures.
Okay. Well, so, so a little bit relative to that, I, I've been thinking a lot, trying to understand the rationale of the state. We don't get a whole lot of clarity. And, you know, so it sounds like that, you know, in the beginning, we had two indicators or two main indicators, right? That, that we didn't have enough testing and then we had issues with hospitaliza, or the supposed issue of the hospitalization rate. I think there was a third one, I'm trying to remember. But nonetheless, there was some strong indicators, you know, I know this board supported March eighteenth, the lockdown. I'm curious, what are the indicators now that cause another lockdown?
Yeah, I'd be happy to take that. So let's see, I have those kind of listed right here in front of me. So as far as disease transmission, that's a case rate, capita case rate, the overall testing positivity rate and the average number of tests over the past seven days. And then the indicators for hospitalization is, is your hospitalization going up or going down and what percent of your population is hospitalized? And finally, there's, there's three or four more related to capacity. How many beds, how many ICU beds, ventilators available and P P E supply? So it's, I think roughly ten or, or twelve indicators that are part of what the state is watching.
Okay. So in, in down to the Optum Serve issue, I know you guys are trying to figure out what's going on, but, you know, we mentioned positivity. Isn't that a, a direct indicator of, basically if our positivity, positivity, positivity rate is up, wouldn't that be because there, there's a possibility that we have a lot of cases out there that are negative outstanding and we don't, therefore it's going to affect that? Because positivity, correct me if I'm wrong, doctors, it's the amount of infections or tests that are showing infection. The amount of tests we've taken and then the amount of infections relative to those tests.
That's right. Yeah. So if we, if we conducted two tests and one of which was positive, we'd have a fifteen percent positivity rate. Yeah, you're right. When you, when you report a positivity rate, you have to have an accurate numerator and accurate denominator. And what we found was, from Optum site, was that they did report the positives relatively quickly and then all the negatives that were done sort of filtered in later. And so we, we find that we can't report the positivity rate right away. We have to wait for the denominator to sort of reach its natural state. And we wish that the reporting were better, but for whatever reason, it takes time for those negative results to come in.
So on that note, do you think there would be a, a little bit of, a little bit of grace for a community like ours that isn't getting the results soon enough? I mean, I know now that the average, I've actually heard within a day and then up to three days, but now it seems like it's taking a whole lot longer.
Yeah, exactly. And, and the state is reporting seven point seven for us. And when we look at our local numbers with the incomplete denominator, we're up around nine, nine and a half. So I think there's some adjustment happening at the state, but I, I think if they were to come to me and say, hey, look, it looks high, I will come back to them and say, well, your state testing site is delaying the reporting of the negatives, so it's artificially high. So we have a certain, certain basis for conversation there for sure.
Okay. Yeah, and my last question, doctor, I mean, this is actually more along the messaging lines and I appreciate what, what Supervisor Medina mentioned. So as I'm paying attention to the public discourse, there's a lot of division over masks and we, we, it's, it's really alarming to me to see the amount of negative discourse all because of someone assuming that someone should be wearing a mask and they're not. And I'm not saying that they shouldn't, you know, as, as far as they have a valid medical reason. I just don't know. But nonetheless, you have people attacking people, you have businesses being put on Facebook and put on blast for, for different reasons. And it's definitely really alarming. I feel like it's only dividing our community. Would you be supportive of a message that would get people to basically back down? It doesn't mean they shouldn't be concerned, but I know, I mean, especially with, it's funny being part of these conversations with the school districts, I'm very concerned because, you know, you're going to have a lot of kids going back to school. There's going to be people that are basically acting like the going to be people that are basically acting like the police and trying to police the masks and all of a sudden, you're going to have a very even increased divided community. So I just wanted to know if you would support a message that would basically tell people, look, you can't be attacking people or getting aggressive with someone just because they're not wearing a mask. You can't just assume that they're not wearing a mask because they're they're trying to violate the order. There's very valid medical reasons, actually. I had one constituent reach out to me and tell me that she's been attacked and she has a valid medical reason, but just the same, she feels like her privacy is becoming less and less valuable over the the need for enforcement from the, you know, the basically the public. So I I'd like to know if you would be willing to support that, doctor.
Yeah, I'd love to talk to you more about it. I I see these YouTube videos of these kind of confrontations and and I actually, some of them have to do with the with the an employee who is, you know, enforcing a store policy and and it's unfortunate that they become a target. I I do totally agree that all of us to try to expect each other to try to de-escalate, not to be confrontational. Think of this more as a, you know, more of a kind of community approach rather than a reason to to attack one another. So I'd love to talk to you more about what that might look like and and I think you you bring up a good point.
Thank you, doctor. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Well, my question, most of the supervisors asked them, but just to wrap it up, Dr. G, are we close, I know it's a sensitive phrase or comment I'm going to say, but are we are we close to that that reoccurs where we step back a couple steps and start closing the bars in other places? Or we're we're okay? Is there a margin between what we are now and the governor putting up that list?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think we're doing okay. We're kind of, if you were to compare us with the rest of the state, we're kind of right in the middle. And so the the 15 counties that are asking to lock back a little bit are, you know, sort of more to the top. So, you know, it could change quickly here, but I think that if we continue to do what we're doing, we should be okay.
Okay, thank you. And I know we said this already in the past, I was under the assumption, and correct me if I'm wrong here, I was under the assumption that when the warm weather's coming in, the Corona will be going away and it just seems like not that's not happening.
Yeah, I I agree. I think we're all learning from this, but there was an assumption that this was just a winter illness and that warm weather would make it go away. Unfortunately, like we're seeing in Texas, in Florida, and Arizona, southern states, certainly very warm states, that's not the case. And it probably has more to do with behavior than biology. It has to do with people, maybe some fatigue with the shutdown or with sheltering in place, maybe a sense of invulnerability. The highest growing age group right now is the 18 to 49 year old age group and they may feel that they that they're not at risk. I should mention, I mentioned diabetes earlier. A 35 year old with diabetes has the same risk as a 75 year old. So that adds 40 years to your kind of risk of COVID, having serious COVID complications. So so I think we, you know, people need to reset in their minds about what's appropriate and what's not and and particularly the sort of younger age group, I think, needs to realize that they're playing a part in this.
And then I don't know if you could ask this question or Tracy, I I did see that the highest, that the section that's increasing the most is family gathering. Is that just because someone within the family has ventured out, gotten in a situation where they they got they got infected and they come back and then infecting everyone else in the family? Is that a safe assumption to say?
Yeah, what what typically happens is somebody will acquire it outside of the home, obviously, the first person. And then then when they gather in close contact, and most of the spread that we're seeing is within households or with households getting together and gatherings. So you have to be, you know, kind of in close contact in the same household for a period of time, maybe, you know, sharing meals and so forth. So what we're seeing now, the sort of rise we're seeing kind of nationwide, is really tied to Memorial Day. And this is one of the most trickiest things about this, is something that happened a month ago is now showing up and it's a, that's what we call a lagging indicator. So whatever we're doing today in San Bernardino County, we won't see the numbers until late July. And so that makes it difficult to, you know, it makes it difficult to steer a car or set a thermostat, much less deal with a pandemic. But that is one of the realities that we're we're faced with.
Do you do you feel that that the protest, that the protests we had a while back, we're going to see some numbers increase in a couple weeks?
We're very worried about that. I I saw some early numbers out of Minnesota that showed they did not see much of an increase from the protests, but those, you know, were two weeks ago and, you know, they've sort of been ongoing and I think it's too early to really know. But one thing that one advantage they have in the protests is they've been largely outside and I think that does make a big difference. As I said earlier, most of the spread is happening in indoor settings, especially when people are close together for a while.
Thank you, thank you, doctor.
You bet.
I'm going to open it up to the public. Do you have any speaker parts?
Jackie, if you could please state your name.
Yes, good morning. This is Jackie Morris Lopez San Juan Batista. I have a question regarding the data on the recent COVID positive data. I know you gave us the general number for San Bernardino County, but what's the breakdown in my community of San Juan Batista? If you can state that number without breaking any HIPAA or any violations? Second comment is, I don't appreciate Supervisor Peter Hernandez's comment in inquiry to put Dr. G on the spot to come out with the public statement against mask wearing or not. I feel that's highly inappropriate and he should not ask that question. And Dr. G, I understand and believe that you would not answer that question. It's a public health issue, the pandemic. Sounds to me like the anti-maskers in our county are ignoring the data, the current data of what's going on in other states of Florida and Texas. Our numbers are increasing. I feel that's our own defense as a medical professional as well, but that's our best defense right now and I think we need to not give credence to that question. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speaker?
If you wish to make a comment, press star nine or raise your hand. Courtney, if you could please state your name.
Good morning. My name is Courtney Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
I heard the doctor mention quite a few instances of how our numbers are not really reliable, that they're not coming in 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 the amount of time that they should. It's really odd that we're not receiving negative test results, the same timeframe that we're receiving positive results, but yet the numbers are the ones dictating all of the choices being made. So I would see that as a clear, you know, now we're just speculating. Our numbers aren't, you know, truthful and real time and this number comes back in this many days, but that one comes back, like, it's confusing. So I don't feel like that we can base all of our decisions off of these skewed numbers. Another thing that the doctor mentioned was diabetes. That's, you know, very highly related to obesity. So I would like the doctor to comment more about that. Maybe this is where our focus needs to be. That diabetes and obesity is considered an epidemic in our country. That's a very valid point. Maybe our health and discussion should be geared more towards the people that are at risk and the percentages of those people that live in our community. I would like to ask that we stop labeling people like, you know, anti-maskers and anti-American and if you do this, then you're with this side. This is causing divisions in our community. Another thing that I wanted to mention is the absolute threat from our public health offices and things specifically related to entities such as bars. The ABC is threatening to take people's liquor licenses if they do not comply. These are not laws, these are guidance and these are recommendations. Threats should not be coming from these entities with with the individual's decision to run their business as just cause. And I would like to remind that the Health Department does fall under search and seizure laws, that they have to have a reason to contact and harass our business owners. I would like the board to take the doctor's comments today seriously, that we make decisions based on more concrete facts than these numbers that are completely skewed as the doctor stated. Thank you.
Ma'am. Next speaker.
Valerie, if you could please state your name. Valerie, if you could please unmute yourself.
Okay, I it it I got unmuted, thank you. I wanted to express my gratitude to Dr. Gilarducci for bringing up what was also discussed in the national news this morning about the complications of diabetes and health in our communities and how that is complicating the COVID patient problems. And the fact that much of the diabetic problem and the obesity could be alleviated through better accommodation of walking paths and parks, that investments in parks has proven to be good for the budget, that money, all the money that goes into parks comes back in law enforcement reduction and mental health and physical health. So thank you very much for bringing that up, Dr. Hernandez. Hopefully, we will accommodate that in San Bernardino County. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. See, that was next speaker.
Melissa, if you could please state your name.
Good morning. My name is Melissa Gong. I'm a resident of San Bernardino County. I would like to first thank you guys for taking my call, but I would like to address the supposed rallies that are being held at the Pepper Tree Farm, led by one of the people who was already on this call, Vidanah Freitas, Courtney Nielsen-Evans, and Hunter Cunio, also endorsed by Supervisor Hernandez, when this is in clear violation of the government, the state government's reopening plan. This is actually a Phase Four group that's gathering. And the fact that it is being advertised as an open San Bernardino County rally, but it is being advertised on Highway 25 as a concert. I'd like to understand how the Board of Supervisors can allow this, how the Public Health Department has allowed this. The Black Lives Matter protests were allowed to continue because they were in fact protest, not asking people to pay cover charges for parking and for vans. So I'd like to hear the rationale behind why this is being allowed.
Does that conclude your questions, ma'am?
I have a lot of questions, but for right now, yes, that concludes this question.
Well, I'm giving you up three minutes. You still got a minute.
Okay. I'd also like to, I'd also like to understand why our case positivity, we have a huge, huge amount of positive cases in the county right now and we are not doing anything as far as scaling back any of our reopening plans. In fact, we are wide open with the exception of Phase Four gatherings, but then again, we are having Phase Four gatherings. So I need to understand why we haven't scaled anything back with 46 cases the week before last and 43 cases last week, especially with Dr. Gilarducci. You understand social determinants of health. Obviously, we have a very vulnerable population here. We need to understand why this is happening and what is our mitigation and and abatement for this. So that concludes my question.
All right. Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
We have no more public comment. If you wish to make a comment, press star nine or raise your hand. We have no more comments.
Okay, thank you. We'll we'll bring it back to the board. Ray, we had a couple members of the audience ask some questions and you may send your response either through email or share with us, it's how you how you want to, Ray. First one, first question is, can we separate San Juan Batista's numbers with our San Antonio County? And the second question was from the madam who asked us, what's the difference between the Hollister concerts and the protests? Those are the two questions that are asked from the members of the public. If you do not wish to have them today, make sure you provide some type of memo or written documents and those individuals that express those questions, please contact the county administration office at 831-636-4000. And as for Ray Espinoza, the CEO, he will be more than gladly to share with you the response. Okay, we'll bring it back to the board. Do we go to close sessions or do we go?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Thank you. I think we we need to discuss as a board and it probably needs to be discussed publicly. I think the the one public comment as far as, you know, the concerts being a real good example of how, you know, we take a huge risk in the in this county, allowing something like that to take place without a whole lot of consequences. And in our meetings for the roadmap for recovery, this has been kind of a concern with the two city mayors as far as how do we have some level of enforcement tools if if needed? And I'm not advocating any reason to increase enforcement at this period of time, but this is a, this virus is a be with us and these guidances from the state are a be with us for a period of time going forward. And I I think the Health Department would like to have some sort of enforcement ability, especially with businesses that really are not following the guidances. And for most part, 98% of people in San Antonio County, its businesses have been fantastic and it's reflective in in the success of keeping the positive rates down in relation to some of our neighboring counties. But we still, you know, I I think we we still have to have, A, a very strong message that face covering, masks are effective, B, we have to share the responsibility that being out in public, we we should be doing, taking care of our family and friends and our community by adhering to social distancing and and the guidances in place and the activities that we're a part of. And but there are, without question, some, you know, bad players. And I I think there needs to be consequences for those type of actions like any other law. You know, we have speed limits posted on on our roadways for a reason. And, you know, it it we have to have personal responsibility. Now, I think our staff has been, you know, we've wanted to have the educational approach, but perhaps we we need to discuss a, you know, enforcement ability too. I want to throw that out to my colleagues on the board.
I think that's a, I think that's an excellent question. I honestly believe that the state of California has now issued a mandate of face covering, but no, no resources to enforcement and it leaves that need individual counties to enforce the state's face covering mandate. And again, I'll say it again, it's like to 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 my last day as a county supervisor, the state of California is no friend of San Bernardino County and this is a perfect example of the state of California giving us a mandate with no teeth behind it and And I think you bring a legit question, and it might be through education or through some other mechanism, but it needs to be heard at a lower level with public input and the public needs to be aware. And so I would recommend, and in fact, Ray, let's put this for the next board meeting so the public can know that we're going to discuss these items. It's not fair for the public for us to discuss about it right now without public input.
I agree with you, Mr. Chairman. I certainly think that the public needs to weigh in on that, and I could agree 100%.
Thank you, we're going to do that, Ray, let's put that in the next board meeting.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, so on July 21st, what we'll do is we'll answer, we'll bring answers to those two questions as well as agenda as the item that you requested.
Perfect, thank you.
And then we also have a public speaker here as well. Aleia Salinas, I think she wants to make a comment, a public comment on this item.
A public speaker, from whom?
We have a speaker in the chambers, Mr. Chair, Aleia Salinas. Ms. Salinas?
Well, I'm sorry, was she afforded the opportunity?
Yeah, she's been, she's been standing here, but we skipped over her with the comments of the board.
Typically, don't do that, but, okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate that. I was waiting for the people on Zoom to call in, and then I had, anyway, thank you for letting me speak. So first of all, I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for early on doing the shelter in place and then coming up with a mask order. It's always what is the most important is not just about listening to the public input, and it's greatly appreciated, obviously, by your constituents, but what is driving, what is going on right now is the science, the facts, and the data. And I don't want the Board of Supervisors to fall themselves with those that are, there is a majority of silent people who believe that the mask order is for the, is for the public interest. It's for the health, this is the health issue, it's not going away. As a matter of fact, just the United States numbers on Saturday was 40,000. On Sunday, it went up to 45,000. It's increasing. It's in the news every day. You can see the information for yourself, you can go to the state government, federal websites. The numbers are increasing, they're not going away. And I agree with Jackie Morris about Supervisor Hernandez putting Dr. Gilarducci in a position to ask for him to put out some kind of opinion or statement to have or be against people who, you know, not wearing masks. Anyway, what should be is that maybe Supervisor Hernandez should enforce the fact that the masks are required because it is a health issue. And I think maybe that Peter Hernandez should go out and speak and say that you should wear a mask, respect what the, what the, what the state has done for the best interest of the community and all the citizens is that we need to respect each other, and if somebody has a health issue, you don't, it's invisible, we don't know what it's like when people have issues, and some people may not be able to wear a mask, then you can't go out in public or you can't demand to go into a store. The store will do the purchases for you. I want to thank for doing the outs, giving us the information with regards to the outer area hospitals. I think somebody has been asking that for quite some time. And the concert is, is an issue. It went out as a rally, they publicized it as a rally, and then just right as it's about to start, the day before, they said it was a concert. Phase Four is not, is not available yet, and I think we need to do something about that, thank you.
Thank you. That's, are we done with public comment on, on the subject matter?
Yes.
Yes.
We are?
Yes, sir.
I think you're three minutes off, Aleia.
Public comment's over, sir, we have nobody else in the chambers, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, any final thoughts or comments on the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So I just wanted to make sure I spoke about it, I, Crystal actually put a comment in the chat box that, yeah, I've been, I've been attending this, the inter-district meetings with County Office of Ed leading that conversation with Dr. Gilarducci. It's what I expected, very informative, you know, it, the districts want to do what's right. They struggle with how to do that. It's, you know, in kind of the simple terms, it's a hot mess. And it kind of just iterates the reality that it's, we can assume how to do something really good to protect public health, but the outcome, it's a whole nother animal and a lift. And if anything, I would encourage the board to support helping to fund the districts now that they're going to have to require masks. We're going to have to put, if we want to put up, then we got to pay for it. You know, I know as a, as a, as a business owner, if I have to require something like uniforms, I have to pay for it. And I think if we're going to be willing to own up to this reality, then we need to be willing to support them because this is not going to be an overnight issue as far as the financial aspect. I know the OES, and I know Crystal's really grateful, OES helped them, they got them a bunch of masks. But, you know, all things considered, when you're dealing with little ones, and that's why the, I sense, you know, the sentiment was if we had the ability to recommend, they would still have a better compliance effort because they could manage it depending on the, basically the logistics of the school district. Some schools rural or smaller, they're easier to manage because they're smaller, like, like Crystal mentioned. But the bigger districts, bigger capacity in classrooms, now when you're dealing with quarantining, if one kid gets sick, there's going to be a whole nother lift when it deals with contact tracing of 30 kids. If this is not going to be an easy thing, and if we truly want to be partners with the school districts, then we got to help them. And right now, that's exactly what's going to happen is, and I asked the question and it wasn't very clear, and I get it, you know, when it comes down to the outcomes, it's hard to measure, but, you know, I know as a business owner, you say, well, I go through so many amount of gloves. If we're, if, I know what my costs are when it comes to providing gloves for my staff, when they're, when they're working behind the counter. So to a certain extent, now we got to get to do the dirty work and do our homework and figure out what the cost is and help our districts with that cost because now they're going to have to deal with this for the whole school year. If they're going to require gloves, they're going to, you know, or masks, these kids take them off, they fall off, you know, they're touching their face. How many times do they touch their face before you replace it? There's all these different layers of cost that they're going to have to assume. And from what it sounds like, they're getting hit from both ends because not only are they getting this expectation now, and it's funny because I sense this urgency because they were scrambling to figure out, they assumed according to the last order, 12 and under, you know, you didn't have to wear a mask, and all of a sudden, the state pivots all over again like they've been doing, right? It's like they make an order and the counties have to figure out the outcomes. I agree with Supervisor De La Cruz's sentiment that the state is not a friend of Samuel County, or counties in general, because they treat us all the same and ultimately the impacts are different. But nonetheless, we're, there's going to be all this expectation on these districts, and they're, they're really stressing out about this. There's going to be a big shift in students, I foresee. Some schools, they're going to lose a lot of kids because they're not going to go to school because their parents could take them out and just say, you know what, I'm going to homeschool, or put them through a charter program, something that, or even a distance learning program. I know that they created different programs, but now there's going to be all these implications, what that means for negotiations with the unions. It's a, it's, this is an animal. So I think it's good for us to understand that and then us be willing to support them in their time of need. Because right now, I, the state is actually, that was the last thing I was going to mention, and there may revise, they basically mentioned that they're going to get hit pretty hard financially also. The school districts are going to be suffering major, and on our end, we can't just sit back and let that happen. Those are my comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, thank you Supervisor Hernandez. Okay, we'll continue, the next item on the agenda, Ray, do we go to closed session or do we go to item number two?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we'd like to go ahead and go into closed session based on timing and staffing availability.
So we are going to closed session?
Yes.
Okay, good, all right. Will County Council please report to the public before we go to closed session?
Yes, we're going to closed session based on labor negotiations exemption under the government code.
And is there any speaker parts on closed session?
If you wish to make a comment, press star nine or raise your hand.
There's nobody in the chamber either, Mr. Chair.
Excuse me?
Nobody in the chamber as well, and nobody, according to the clerk on Zoom, I think there's no comment.
There is no comment, okay, now we go to closed session? Or we will take a quick three-minute break so we get technically, allow us to go to closed session?
Mr. Chair, as well, we'd like to clear the chamber because we're going to have the chamber, we're going to utilize the chamber for our closed session for social distancing.
Okay, perfect. Okay, perfect.
Oh, my God.
May I have to have a talk to my wife?
She didn't.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
We're all here? No, not yet?
Yes, we're here.
Okay, all right. Ray, Joe, are you ready?
We got to report out, yep.
Okay, anything to, anything to report on a closed session?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Um, is it okay for the board that we go back to number, to number two, to, I'm sorry, I apologize, to number one? There's a adoption of a resolution that the board needs to do to extend the emergency? That's item number one, on, on consent. Well, yeah, on consent.
On, on regular agenda.
No, no, wait a minute. I'm looking at the wrong, sorry, I apologize. Hold on.
It's the cherries that Anthony gave you.
Hold on, am I doing the right thing?
It's number one on regular.
Number one, regular number one. There we go. All right, Ray, you want to raise the board on what we need to do?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, we're just requesting it, your board, um, go back to that number one item and just adopt Resolution 202039. Uh, and this is in regards to the extending of the local emergency, the proclamation of that. That's all we're requesting board to do.
All right, thank you. Before I ask for motion, let me, um, put it up to the public, I think it's fair. Give the public an opportunity so we can hear their view of that one. Do we have any speaker cards on that one?
If you wish to make a comment, press star nine or raise your hand.
None.
We have no comments.
All right, bring it back to the board. What's the pleasure, board?
Hope to adopt the, uh, resolution.
Is there a second?
Second, Medina.
All right, all of us, say aye.
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 Nay.
Again, that was the nay, nay from?
Peter Hernandez.
Superintendent, thank you. It was a four-on-one vote with Superintendent Hernandez voting no. Thank you. Now we'll go to item number two of the regular agenda and budget presentations. Ray, Stuart?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and get started. I'd like to invite Stuart up to the podium now, but I wanted to first open up, um, and highlight, uh, that today what we're requesting your board is to adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year recommended budget as a spending authority until we actually have our hearing and adoption of our final budget in, in August. I know we talked about that with your board a few times. Um, this is just to allow us to, the ability to have a spending authority as well as accepting or adopting, excuse me, the resolution of a gain limit for 2021. So those are the, those are the, um, recommendations that we're asking you to look at today. Um, one of the things I did want to highlight for you is you're going to see a tremendous amount of work, um, from our staff. I have to, I have to just say, we're, we're, we're really at the kind of the leading edge of, of what's been done for, um, many counties within the state. Uh, we actually moved forward, uh, with OpenGov and, um, Stuart has taken the lead with that. I want to thank him for all his many hours. You can, you can tell with his eyes, he's, he's tired. He's been working, uh, probably literally around the clock. And we've had staff as well, Dulce and, and many other staff members in administration as well as our staff, um, from other departments and our, our department heads, um, working on this along with addressing COVID. I just can't tell you enough, um, how incredible the team is and, and the work that's been done. Um, what I wanted to say is that this is more or less a, a status quo budget. As we discussed before, there are some nuances and there's going to be some, some items highlighted for us in the PowerPoint presentation that, that Stuart will outline for you. But I, I just needed to open up by saying that and, um, it's going to be so much nicer for, um, your constituents and the public within our community to look at our budget and, and have a lot more clear, um, direction of where we're at and where we're going. And tying that into our, um, our strategic plan that we adopted, um, a couple of years ago. And there's many, um, links that actually highlight that and, and really having kind of a clear direction of where your board wants to go. So, you know, CSAs have, have been at the fore of, of having issues trying to understand what's happening with the budget and where their budget is and what the numbers look like. Well, this is going to be such a better tool for them to, um, to be able to see that and, and know where they're at and, and what the budget looks like. So with that, I go ahead and, um, I'm going to hand it off to Stuart and Stuart's going to elaborate further. Um, and yeah, go ahead and hand it off to you, Stuart.
All right, good morning, everyone. Uh, Stuart Potry, uh, County Budget Officer, staff with, staff here with county. Um, I did just get a text message from OpenGov and apparently we're the first California county to have an online budget, um, which is pretty amazing. Um, and I did just, uh, if I could, just wanted to really thank Dulce Alonso and Erica Lashinsky, um, as well as the Assistant Auditor, Leanne Godinez, um, for all their help. Uh, I go up to Leanne's office probably every couple of times a week, uh, to, to bounce ideas off of her and, uh, Dulce stayed up really late last night helping me out with finalizing a few things, um, and, and I'm really appreciative. And I did want to thank all, all the departments. Um, I think, uh, I was kind of giving them directions on the fly there, especially once COVID kind of, uh, shut things down. Um, and I think, uh, for me, I want to have better communication and I hope everybody, uh, understands that, uh, at the times it was, uh, it was interesting, uh, getting through this. So, uh, I did just want to state that the, uh, OpenGov, uh, budget book is online. And today we're not holding the public hearing. This is just, uh, uh, the recommended budget to be presented to the board, um, in accordance with the County Budget Act before June thirtieth. This is for the board's consideration to, uh, adopt the appropriations in this budget as the spending authority until the public hearings are held. Um, those public hearings will be held in August. I think we are shooting for August fourth or third, fourth. Um, kind of tentative right now, I think, based on, on the meetings that, uh, that need to be held. We do need to have that public hearing before, I believe it's September eighth and then, uh, get the, uh, budget adopted, uh, the final adoption, um, by October, um, eighth or tenth. Um, that, that being said, uh, the, the open, uh, I wanted to sh- I, I'm going to basically go back and forth between the, uh, the OpenGov, uh, budget software and my PowerPoint, um, just to highlight it for, for the public and where to go, um, how to view it. Um, let me escape from here for a second. So, uh, the, the recommended budget for fiscal year 2021, um, you can just Google San Benito County and, uh, you can get to the county's homepage. Um, the, over to the right is the quick links section and it is the first item. Um, and you can click on it and it takes you to a, uh, homepage here. Um, this homepage, uh, has three different sections. Um, similar to our table of contents and our PDF documents that we had been posting, uh, we have outlined, um, different introduction, introduction and overview sections with a little bit of analysis included in there. Um, the budget detail section on each department, um, as well as our schedules and some other information like our glossary and appendix. Um, I do, uh, we are going to probably come out with a supplemental citizens guide to, uh, to this so that we can get some more information uh, to citizens on how to navigate through this. Um, but basically all of these are linked. You click on them, it opens up another page to where you want to go. And, uh, at the bottom of every page, and I'll show you the, uh, the board members, uh, page right now. Um, at the bottom of every page, there is a table of contents button if you get lost to go back, uh, to that homepage. Um, additionally, we have links to click on throughout the budget book that'll take you to, uh, other pieces of information. For example, um, right here, we have the strategic plan overview that you can click to and get sent to the strategic plan page to find some more information on strategic plan. We had asked all of our department heads to, uh, provide us some information on their, um, how their, how their department fits in with the, uh, countywide, uh, strategic plan. We're really grateful that everyone, uh, participated in that. Um, so let me get back to going through my PowerPoint. Um, the, uh, overall budget, uh, countywide is a hundred and ninety-four point six million. Uh, this represents an increase of approximately, uh, forty, close to fifty million. Again, this is supposed to be somewhat of a status quo budget. We have a lot of capital projects coming up. We have our bridge program moving forward this year, um, and I'll go highlight the, the road and bridge, uh, fund. Um, we have a capital fund expenditures increased of nine million dollars mainly due to the behavioral health building that is going to be seen, we are going to see most of the expenditures in this year. Um, additionally, we are receiving, uh, CARES Act funding, um, for disaster recovery for COVID-19. Um, obviously that's going to be spent in this next year and we have a very limited timeline of about six months to get that, uh, that spent. So, um, we should be seeing that, that coming soon here, um, in July. Additionally, uh, the overall budget has a net increase of staffing levels of eleven full-time equivalents. And I did just want to, uh, mention that in total, we had a net increase of FTEs because we've had some swap outs and some changes of, of positions in this budget, uh, that were requested. But we had a total net request of twenty-five FTEs. Um, we did not propose to add all of the requests this year, uh, mainly due to some decreases in some of our revenue and to balance the budget at this time. Again, one of the major concerns, um, for our administration team is our vacancy rate. I know that we continuously have proposed positions to the board knowing that we would be at that twenty percent rate. Some of our concerns are with the change of the economy as it is right now and the high percentage of unemployment, we will actually receive, uh, a lot more, um, uh, interest in our jobs, um, which means we need to be a little bit more scrutinizing now. Um, we're not going to have that savings, uh, rate that we might normally see potentially. Again, we are kind of monitoring that and going through, um, uh, the positions as they, as they come. That being said, we did ask, uh, the original budget that was rec- that was recommended by the department heads, uh, did not balance. Um, I want to stress that that was the reason why. We had to come to the department heads and ask them to reduce, uh, their requests. Um, I know these are difficult discussions, um, but we think that it is prudent, um, at this time with not knowing the full outcomes um, of this COVID, uh, pandemic and recession. Um, I did just want to highlight for everybody that in the general fund, there were additional fourteen FTEs that we did not recommend, um, on this budget. They totaled over a million dollars. Um, again, we wouldn't have been able to, uh, meet, um, our goals of a balanced budget as well as having additional general fund reserves, um, to replenish what we have already, uh, spent on COVID and for any potential increased disaster, um, not related to the pandemic. Um, so I just wanted to highlight that to the board. Uh, I do thank all the department heads for working with me. Um, I asked them of this request about two weeks ago, um, and it has been a big push to make the adjustments and make the changes, um, to bring you this balanced budget. Um, but we do, we, we do really appreciate it and we know it's, it's difficult. There are a lot of departments that, uh, really need help. I know that we are looking at, uh, additional sources. We have the CARES money coming in. We're looking at potential options to, um, hire limited term positions for some, uh, departments like the elections department that is going to have, uh, increased, uh, mandates with this, uh, with this COVID, um, uh, pandemic. But I just wanted to highlight that to the board. I thought it was really important that they know, um, what, what the administration office, uh, asked of our departments. Um, so I'm just going to take everyone over to the personnel schedule. I just want to, uh, kind of walk through, um, our, uh, our OpenGov software as I'm going through this to highlight it. Um, again, it was a net increase of, uh, eleven positions total, uh, was the, was the net increase. Uh, again, we had a lot of swap outs, uh, behavioral health had asked for some positions to be swapped. We had some positions swapped at RMA at different departments, uh, to better suit the needs of the department as a whole. Um, and, uh, this, uh, this specific document is static. I'm hoping next year it'll actually be dynamic like the other, uh, other charts and tables, uh, in the, in the document. We just didn't get to it at the time. Um, but I do think, uh, this revamp of this list, uh, kind of highlights everything a little bit better. It outlines, uh, more detailed to the budget units of, of, of where everything is at. For example, uh, the clerk recorder's office, uh, has never been broken out on the actual budget book. Uh, so we, we highlighted that, uh, so that the public and the board knows where the positions are being allocated. Um, additionally, I believe it's five hundred, five hundred and seventy-two point seven total positions are being proposed, uh, at this time. Um, again, that's the eleven, uh, FTE increase. The positions that were added in the general fund, um, two of them, uh, were, uh, are being paid for through other funding. Um, we have funding for homelessness for a sheriff deputy, um, for a program that HSA is running. Additionally, uh, Additionally, there is funding for AB 109 to pay for another office assistant in the probation department. And the other two positions that were added in the general fund were corrections officers. In preparation for the opening of the jail, if the sheriff needs to actually increase the staffing levels based on outcomes of the Board of Corrections, they're still waiting again on occupancy. And they're gonna have a review once that starts and they actually don't know what the determination is gonna be on their FTE counts. So just wanted to highlight those key things on our personnel. The, the general fund just by itself is a 63.1 million, 63.1 million in appropriations. This is an increase of about 4.2 million from last year. Again, mainly due to the CARES Act funding that we will be receiving and spending on programs within the community. Additionally, at the two meetings ago, the board moved to change the funding of the OPEB, which has saved the general fund a million dollars, which again has also helped balance this budget. Additionally, in our office, we reduced some of the maintenance requests and some of the capital expenditure requests by approximately 1.5 million dollars from what the departments had originally requested. Again, we can, we'll discuss, we'll discuss that in a little bit more detail as we go. So now I wanna take you to the budget summary section. So in here, we just, we just highlighted a lot of the information that I just, I just went over. Again, we have multiple links. This link goes to our San Benito County Transparency Portal. Soon here, we're, we just got an integration with OpenGov and we're gonna be stuck, we're uploading data nightly. Once I make the report, we'll be able to show that and the public will actually be able to see data as it's entered and, and in our system. Additionally, just kind of wanted to highlight that all of these graphs down here and, and tables that you'll find throughout the budget book are also found on this San Benito County Transparency Portal and I'll click on it for just a quick second. If you come over to the recommended budget, every single saved view that I worked on is in here. You can go ahead and see it for yourself. You can manipulate these charts and look at the things that you would like to, like to look at. There's a filtering section. You can look at our different funds, departments, our whole chart of accounts is in here. If anyone ever has any questions, they're more than welcome to call the administration office. I'm more than happy to walk anybody through anything that they would like to, like to view. Additionally, just going back to this budget summary table, this is the 194.6 million dollar appropriation countywide. Again, these tables are dynamic, so if you would like to click down and see what that's made up of, you can click down into these revenues, you can go into property tax and you can see all of the accounts that the county uses and where the money's being deposited. And I just wanted to highlight that. You can always come back up here and click refresh and it'll go back to what it was. Additionally, more discussion on the general fund overview that I just, just kind of went over. And again, here is the table for the general fund budget. Again, we are expecting approximately a $2 to $3 million deficit this year. There were many one-time items that occurred in this year that the board is, is very aware of, mainly being allocation of COVID disaster funds, the $1 million. We are expecting that to be fully reimbursed. We can get reimbursed through the CARES Act funding, also through FEMA. FEMA is a little bit more difficult, not as flexible on some of the items. But, but we are gonna be focusing efforts after this budget is done on that, that, those recovery efforts. Additionally, this year, the transfer hasn't occurred yet, but it will be 500,000 for a pothole project. That was throughout the county. And approximately 500,000 in, in capital expenditures for various capital expenditures. Additionally, there was a $400,000 purchase of the Buena Vista property that you, that we will see in that deficit. And then there were some larger salary payouts due to retirees. And I did just wanna highlight that, again, another thing that was in, that's gonna be in here that we'll be taking out this year is that $1 million for OPEB. It's, it's reverting back down to closer to 200,000 for those, those contributions to our OPEB trust. Again, we are still on track to continue to increase that OPEB trust just by a smaller more, margin year to year than we were. Some of the, I, I just wanted to highlight some of the concerns. Again, our focus is gonna be on recovery efforts. We don't know how this is gonna shake out in the long run. But we are, are, obviously, our public health department is monitoring it, but we're monitoring it as well from a fiscal standpoint. We have our staff monitoring our expenditures and coding properly so that we can get reimbursed for this money. We are gonna see sales tax and realignment decreases. I got two of the, the big realignment department fiscal officers, deputy director, sorry, here and from behavioral health and HSA. I've had discussions with both of them. They're not too concerned about the realignment money. HSA has been backfilled by some funding from, from the state to respond to COVID and they've been able to move hours around to, to kind of be covered in whole. And again, I think I've discussed this before, but behavioral health is not really seeing any decreases until two years in arrears from now, especially on their MHSA money, which is the 1% tax on, on wealth over a million dollars.
When you're referring to changing the hours and moving them over, are you referring to the state paying that or CARES paying that?
Yeah, from the, from that funding.
From the CARES payment?
This is separate money, I believe, is it CARES money? Yeah, it is CARE, it is a CARES allocation that went directly.
So that, that takes down our 6.8 to whatever the difference is, or is that a different funding mechanism? Just out of curiosity, thank you.
Casey Storegard, Deputy Director of Finance and Administration at the Health and Human Services Office. So it's a combination of funding. So we have our own dedicated CARES Act funding specific to public health. In addition, we'll work with county admin to leverage whatever we can at the county level. But also at the program level, we've received dozens of new funding streams specific to COVID responses that will help offset any one-time dip in either sales tax, realignment money. So it's a combination of different.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Additionally, we did discuss, both of those departments have, have good fund balances and, and they have, they have reserves to cover any, any losses of this year or, or the next few years. One of the big concerns, and this was just brought to our attention maybe a month and a half ago, is child support. They're gonna be seeing a 20% reduction in their fund revenues. We are currently discussing that internally of where this goes from here. Those reductions are not reflected in this budget at this time due to the, still deciding what is going to happen in that department. But we did wanna make it, make the board aware of, of those reductions and that we're, we're actively looking at what's, what's going to happen. That is both on the Santa Cruz side and our side. It is the allocation of money. Sorry for anybody that doesn't know this, but Santa Cruz County and San Benito County are a regional agency for child support services. The funding comes 100% from the state and they have changed the way that they are going to be doing allocations based on their caseloads within these, within each community. And they're reducing the overall contribution to both the, the Santa Cruz, San Benito County Regional Agency, so.
20% of what? 20% of a million, 2 million, 10 million?
So they're at about 1.7 million budget of what I have currently. But it'd be 20% of that 1.7 million is about what they're, they're looking at in decreases.
Specifically on that, Stuart, do you anticipate any staffing issues that we're gonna have to deal with? That's quite a bit of money, 20%. How do we deal with that? And is it gonna impact any of our team members and if it is, and we have any plans to handle that?
I'll go ahead and answer that. So we have been meeting with the director and we're looking at many options. One is to potentially move that office over into our new, well, we'll have some space available at the behavioral health building that we can utilize. And by that time, we'll, we won't have a whole lot of money we have to pay for rent. So we could subsidize that money for a staff person. Also, the reduction in our OPEB cost also does assist us and help us with potentially, you know, having to let somebody go, so.
The OPEB was about a $30,000 savings from child support. Additionally, sorry to interrupt. But, but additionally, their rent is about $100,000 right now and we think we can substantially decrease that if we did move to behavioral health building or potentially another option. They are proposing some reduction of FTEs, but we're obviously trying to mitigate that with other, other options here.
That, that's exactly what I was gonna say is that, so for us, for the county, there was four positions that need to be reduced out of that and then I believe 10 for Santa Cruz. And so staff's been working diligently. We do, we do not wanna lay people off, so that's, that's really where we're at. And so we're looking at many options and these are the options in place that we have that I think we're gonna be fine with this.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I, if I could have a follow-up question on, on that. So, we're going into kind of the general fund money to backfill child support services? Is, that's what I'm understanding with that conversation right there?
No, no. So the funding, so if you recall, there was an allocation of so much funding that we have to have for individuals for our OPEB costs. Remember that? So what we're doing is we're reducing that number for them. So that's out of their, that's out of their costs. That's out of the subvention funds.
Okay, all right. Okay, good. That's what, you lost me.
Okay.
It's still the pensions of funding that's, you know, your backfill that way. Okay, got it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank, thank you, Chair. Additionally, I'd like to show the capital project schedule. See if this link works or if I gotta get out. So the capital project schedule, I believe the total is 18.9 million. Again, like I stated earlier, the big items there are the behavioral health building. Most of the construction is gonna happen this year. We still have the rollover of the Hall of Records slash the old courthouse project. There's a few different pieces to that project. We just haven't been able to move forward on it. Additionally, there's the homeless shelter phase three. There's a transitional housing project from HEEP grant funding. And there's a few other, other minor things. There's some items in the, in the old jail that need drastic attention. Additionally, I believe HSA is in the process of getting a second transitional housing grant through CDBG funding. So we will most likely have to bring an adjustment for that because we only put kind of a guesstimate at this point of where we're gonna be at or what's gonna be needed for that. So we'll, we'll be bringing some updates to the board. Again, there were a lot more requests in capital. I think it's no surprise that there's a lot of deferred maintenance at the county's facilities. And I know that we are finalizing that facility's report to identify which ones are the ones that need to be worked on and which ones we might need to look at getting rid of. This is the road project schedule. Again, there's 28.8 million dollars of road projects that are being proposed. That number is actually a little bit higher if you include some of the projects that are gonna be happening under the CSA's funds. But those are gonna actually be recorded, I believe, in the CSA actual fund. Again, the bridges are the big piece that's gonna be moving forward this year. We're gonna have hospital road bridge that's gonna be fairly built out. The big one that the county is looking at is the Union Road Bridge. We believe that we've identified that the matching contribution from the county, which is approximately 4 million, potentially a little bit more, can be paid for through, through traffic impact fees because that road was already part of the traffic impact fee study. And they are gonna be doing some widening and obviously resealing and paving over that, that bridge. And we've been able to identify that as well. There will be some major SB1 projects moving forward. This is gonna be an interesting year for SB1 because there's like, the engineers are playing a little bit of catch-up on projects from previous fiscal years and we've had some buildup. So there should be approximately 3.4 million worth of roads projects moving forward. Normally, we only receive an allocation of 1.7, but again, that's a, that additional funding is a, is a buildup. The county is also moving forward on Measure G product, projects. I believe there's over 1.8 million already available for the county's local roads portion. We're gonna be looking into options, options here from either loaning ourselves some funding, knowing that the money is gonna be rolling in, or, or some other financing options. The two big items over there in the other column for funding sources are Best and Fairview. Those projects are paid for through the John Smith Landfill Enterprise Fund. Those will be transfers out to cover the costs of those, those road projects.
What's the link for this one? I clicked on road, roads, but I didn't see that. I think I missed it.
It's on the, yeah, I'll just show you. So it's over, over here.
Oh, there we go, thank you.
Improvement schedule. The one you probably clicked on was the road fund, which.
The RMA road fund?
Yeah, that'll show you all of the actual expenditures.
Thank you. Perfect.
That's, that's kind of all I have. I did just wanna maybe highlight some more, more things within the budget that the community or the board or any of our departments might be, might be interested in, in looking at. Again, all of the fixed asset, capital project, road improvement and personnel schedules are on the right column. We have some information about the budget, some high-level analysis overview, including a forecast that I plan on in the future adding to, increasing and giving an overall forecast of the whole county. This is kind of the start to that and it highlights what we're gonna see. Again, we're gonna be updating this. Right now is a weird time because of COVID. There's a lot of unknowns. That's why some of these items, we're kind of just rolling over because it's kind of a shot in the dark if hotels, if our. Um, that's why some of these items, we're kind of just rolling over because it's kind of, uh, shot in the dark if, uh, hotels, if our, um, transient occupancy tax will come in better, um, or, or business license tax or, or, or the documented transfer taxes. Um, so we will be updating this and giving periodic updates to the board. I plan on, um, hopefully doing that through our, our, uh, fiscal reporting process that I do quarterly. Um, I might not update it quarterly, but it might just be added in there and updated as I get more information, um, so that the board has, uh, up-to-date information on, on where we're projecting to be. Additionally, in this section, um, there's some other, uh, graphs, um, that, that we've kind of added in. Uh, again, there's all, all kinds of ways that we can kind of cut this up and that first link that I showed on the transparency portal is a great, uh, tool if anybody from the public, um, board or the department, um, wanna see, uh, different, uh, if they wanna view their budget in a different way, if they wanna add graphs, um, to anything that they're working on. Um, but again, like this graph, for example, shows the percentage of our revenues. Um, again, our main, uh, general fund revenues are our property taxes and they come in at sixty-three percent, um, just about. Other than that, um, uh, that's, that's all I have, uh, a- at this time. Um, again, uh, my name's Stuart Pachtry, County Budget Officer. If anybody from the public would like to, uh, walk through this budget or call me with questions, let me know if the link's not working so I can fix it. Um, a- anything like that, you're more than welcome to reach out to me. I'm more than happy to help with that. Um, and, uh, i- if the board has any questions too on a specific budget or, or anything that's in here, I'm more than happy to, to answer.
Thank you, uh.
Thank you, Stuart.
Mr. Chair, can I ask?
Supervisor.
Uh, Jim Gillio.
Hold on, Jim, Supervisor, Supervisor.
Oh, no, it's no problem. I just wanna get on the list. Um, I wanted to say thank you, Stuart. Amazing job. This is really, um, really amazing, um, product and to be able to surf around and see this so easily, thank you for that. I do have a, uh, specific, um, budget department general question. It's something that we've been working on over the last week. Uh, CAO Espinoza, do you think this would be more appropriate for Gabriel to answer or for Stuart or what are your thoughts?
We have them both here, so we're, we're good with both of them.
Specifically, I, I got some reports, uh, beginning of last week that there was some, um, it sound, sounded to me like there's maybe, uh, perhaps a little bit of confusion actually about the Youth Alliance budget and the Caminos program. And, uh, uh, CAO Espinoza and I have been, um, commenting or, uh, working back and forth on that a little bit and I know he has some meetings set up, uh, both tomorrow and Wednesday, uh, with staff and then Youth Alliance. Is there, um, any, um, update we can provide now or should we wait till after you meet on Wednesday, CAO?
I, I believe we also have Alan Yamamoto on the phone too, correct, um, Edgar and Jennifer? I believe Alan can also, Alan can comment on that too. Alan, can you do me a favor? Can you please comment on that? Alan, can you please, uh, comment, please, on the Caminos?
Hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, what was the question?
Alan, this is Supervisor Jim Gillio. I just, uh, wanted to summarize kind of what I just said a mo- a moment ago, but essentially, uh, beginning about last week, I started getting some messages of concern from some folks in the community as well as the, uh, Youth Alliance about the, uh, Caminos program and a, uh, decrease in the budget. I did mention to, uh, CAO, uh, if you didn't hear it, I mentioned that I know that there's been some conversations and some meetings set for, uh, tomorrow and also for Tuesday, I'm sorry, for Tuesday and for Wednesday. Um, and, um, that there, it sounds like there actually may be some confusion within the community about that. So I was wondering if we had any updates or if we should wait till after, uh, the meetings tomorrow and Wednesday. Thank you.
Um, I agree, there's some confusion and, um, hopefully that gets clarified in meetings. I've also been in contact with, uh, Pat Low from our Behavioral Health Board and, uh, I will be contacting Marjorie Barrios today because she asked me to do that, to comment on the same issue for clarification. But basically, uh, the programs that we're keeping intact there are the programs that have been raised as a, a priority for them by the people that have contacted me and that's the Caminos program. Those are still in the contract. What we're taking out of there are the mental health clinician, uh, part of the contract because we're actually expanding that portion with four clinicians that'll be out stationed out at the schools. You'll see from our proposed twenty twenty-one budget that we're adding an additional six clinicians. So we're actually strengthening our ability to provide those services and we're doing it in-house and, um, we think we can do a pretty good job of that.
Okay, I look forward to learning more about this, um, and then, uh, one of the, um, goals of our strategic plan is to strengthen our partnership with the community and I, I'm a firm believer that we can't do everything ourselves and we need to multiply, uh, use our community nonprofits as force multipliers. So anything we can do to maintain and enhance, uh, that relationship, not only with Youth Alliance but with the other groups that we partner with, I, I would sincerely appreciate, uh, that. And if there is gonna be some changes, if the board can be, uh, made aware of it, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. No, no problem.
Supervisor here now. Do you have any questions on budget?
No, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Medina?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Supervisor Patel?
Yes, thank you. First off, I, I, I really wanted to, uh, show my appreciation to the staff that put this together. It's easy to navigate. It's concise. Uh, I really enjoyed, uh, well, we just had it this morning, I think. And, um, anyhow, the questions that I have, I'm happy to see that the community programs, uh, they're pretty status quo and in fact, there's a little increase, which I'm a little bit surprised by that. I know the, a lot of these numbers are, might change a little bit. Uh, as we get a little bit closer to adopting the budget and knowing what the revenues and so many impacts that COVID has had on our sales tax, but, but that would reflect an increase in sales tax from last year. Is, is that what you said, uh, Stuart?
Uh, Supervisor, uh, I have to, I have to fix this, uh, this, this link here 'cause it's not, uh, the box wasn't made big enough, but, um, I believe it's actually cost plan charges that have increased, um, which would have increased the overall budget. Uh, I do not think it's, uh, it, well, it's not because I did not put an increase, um, to the, uh, I believe it's a hundred and twenty thousand that we normally allocate. So I did not increase that. It would have been, uh, I, I believe it would have been cost plan charges.
Well, that's good. And then the other thing that I really wanted to ask about, and this is kind of a new, um, such a, uh, the candidate, this, the division. And, you know, have we, should the membership reflect the, uh, the expenses that we've had up to this point and, and carried over expense that, that division needs to pay back to the general fund? Um, right now, it's showing and we're hoping that we have revenues about a, a quarter of a million dollars, not so many dollars. And, you know, the expenses are about that. Should we start be making some money on that, that program? And how are we accounting for, uh, prior year, uh, expenses that we should offset?
Uh, so I believe that there are deposits that were submitted. Um, I don't know if they were submitted in eighteen nineteen or seventeen eighteen. I will, I'll have to check on that. Um, again, the, the twenty nineteen twenty estimate, um, could have, I could have missed something there. Um, so I can check back on that for you Supervisor and get back to you. Um, but it is supposed to be in, uh, I know that, uh, uh, the Ag Commissioner, uh, Karen, uh, Overstreet had done her due diligence on the cost that it was gonna, uh, take. Um, and sh- and she was part of that process of coming up with a deposit amount per applicant that was supposed to reimburse the cost a hundred percent. Um, I see Dulce is nodding to me. Um, I know she was, uh, a part of that as well. Um, so I can check back up on that for you, um, and let you know, um, what's going on with that, that division.
Okay, great. And one other question I have in that division, are we to throw the HAM program in that? Or, um, is HAM in that, uh, development agreement on, on a different, um, uh, accounting schedule?
So, um, I'd have to talk with the auditor, um, about where specifically it, it would make sense to, um, put that. Um, due to the nature of the revenue, I think it would go in the non-departmental revenue to the general fund. Um, unless there's a specific required use for it, um, but otherwise, I believe it should just go to the non-departmental division, um, revenues in the general fund and then be used to offset, uh, general fund department costs.
Okay. Well, again, great work. I wanna thank you for, you know, putting together a, a really fantastic, uh, budget layout. Uh, and you, you could just tell the, the high level professionalism that went into this. I'm very proud of, uh, accounting. Thank you.
Thanks Supervisor.
Thank you. I'm gonna, I'll turn it up to the public. Do you have any speaker cards?
Natasha, if you could please state your name?
Yes, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, this is, I'm Natasha, this is Justin. I did have a comment. I think I, I sent, uh, you all a letter and it's a comment on the letter I sent to the board. I've been researching this and I'm asking the supervisors to reallocate the sheriff's budget, which is twenty-four percent of our general fund, to provide community service specialists to answer the bulk of the nine-one-one calls that they respond to. These nine-one-one calls usually concern mental health, homelessness, addiction, domestic disputes, juvenile infractions. Now armed, in my opinion, and in the opinion of many other, uh, researchers, armed and militarized police deputies are not trained to handle many of these calls and that's why we have such unfortunate incidents. And, so, this would save taxpayers money, especially if we extend the no bail regulations into the next year. Because if we let out, there, there's a continual coming and going through our county jails with a, with a, uh, average of a hundred and twenty-seven inmates a day. And if we could let fifty percent of those who are definitely non-violent offenders out with no bail, these are poor people who can go back to their homes and families and hopefully their jobs until they are called into court to, to, uh, see if they are actually guilty of what they are, uh, accused of. This would save the county thousands and thousands of dollars. So I don't know how, how, on this no bail policy, how many people are being let out, but it definitely should be extended because this will lower the population of the, in the county jail and allow more care to be taken for rehabilitation. Now, I don't know any family, including my own, that has not experienced the trauma of mentally ill and addicted family members and, and friends. This is a health and community crisis, not a policing crisis. Hopefully, there are two million plus coming from the government to help small businesses. And I hope this will be used to benefit small businesses like the Beacon Sisters who have a massage business. And, uh, the, the lady that has yoga studio, whose owner is now holding sessions in a park rather than financing some of the big hedge funds who wanna build a, a, I understand, an, an auto track that's connected to the nose. I would like to mention that there are six hundred billion individuals in this country, billionaires, I mean, six hundred billion lives in this country.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any speaker?
Valerie, if you could please state your name?
Uh, yes, my name is Valerie Eglin with Reach San Benito Parks Foundation. Um, to na- to date more than ever, our parks reflect our community health. As the budget is finalized, please give our parks, trails and bike paths special consideration for these reasons. Reduce diabetes and obesity, to increase mental health, to increase diversity equity, to reduce delinquent behavior, to lower law enforcement costs, to lower health and human services costs, to add vibrancy to the community, to provide active transportation alternatives and to support our diverse families, youth and seniors. All of these things have been basically touched on by some of, uh, what Dr. G had said earlier and what previous, uh, speaker has said. Uh, in this crucial time for all of us, Reach San Benito Parks Foundation encourages the board of supervisors to schedule a special meeting with park stakeholders as they had promised for April fourteenth. Uh, and the Parks and Recreation Commission to create a robust parks plan going forward. Uh, basically, that, that is my statement and I'm hoping that, uh, with all the difficulty I see in the budget, uh, I, I know it's all very brutal. However, we do, uh, we can solve many problems with, uh, adding a bit more to our parks accommodation. And one thing I want to complain, uh, the capital project schedule picture, it is a road with no bicycle accommodation. The outside white lines go right to the dirt. This is a faux pas. Please correct the picture. We want to indicate San Benito County is bike-friendly. Thank you so much and have a great day.
Good morning. Any speaker card?
We have no more comments. If you wish to make a comment, press star nine or raise your hand.
Okay, all right, bring it back to the board. Uh, there's, there's actually two, two, two resolutions to approve that. We need to approve one first and then we'll go to the other one. It's only in reference to the, we'll get to the, to the gain limit after we approve the budget. Or do we need to listen to both of them right at the same time or just, we, can we approve one at a time?
Yeah, I'd, I'd approve one at a time, just for clarity.
Okay, okay. What's the President of the Board?
Mr. Chair, Jim Gillio makes a motion to, uh, re- we, we received the draft presentation of the recommended budget and adopt, uh, adopt the motion as to adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year twenty twenty-one recommended budget as spending authority until budget hearings and adopted of the final budget.
Medina second. Medina second.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion by Gillio, second by Medina. All in favor say aye.
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 Again, motion carries. Budget, uh, we have a budget. All right. Next item, right?
Is it, this is, uh, with regards to the gain limit, we need to have approval from your board and requesting that you adopt the resolution, uh, approving our gain limit for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one.
Make a motion to adopt a resolution setting the gain limit for, uh, year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one?
Second. Gillio second.
Okay, motion by Medina, second by Gillio, or Antic?
Uh, Patel can have it. Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries, five zero. Thank you. Now we have a budget. Thank you. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Gillio.
Second Medina.
Thank you. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
They make all the motions. Aye.
Again, no one. Thank you guys. Bye-bye.
Okay, thank you.
Goodbye.